Outside of the agenda, just a couple of quick introductions. First is Peggy here, who you see in the screen and mine, she's in the center left, but everyone else I know it's crazy. Peggy Connor is the official term recording secretary, Peggy?
I believe so.
Okay, so Peggy's gonna be taking minutes for us, so nobody has to worry about doing that here from our end anymore. It was a huge, huge help the other night with the Development Review Board, and we appreciate Peggy coming on board to do that. Next one. Mr. Cromer, do you want to introduce yourself?
Certainly, if I can get myself off mute. Yes, I'm not Darla Senical. I do play her on television sometimes, though. Yeah, I'm John Cromer, the newest member of the Commission. It's great to be here, folks. Look forward to pitching in and helping out. And yes, you see Darla's name on there, and she is my better half. So.
Wonderful. Congrats, welcome aboard. So the first order of business on the agenda is we need to elect a chair and co-chair. And technically clerk, and that's actually, we will discuss that further down in the line here. The as you all know, both your previous co-chairs, one opted not to be reappointed, the other has opted to step down. Katie stepped down. I'd like to say, like, give her a big thanks for the years that she put in on this board. She was helping getting the town plan, the energy plan, and the last round of the, last two rounds of the bylaws. She put in some long hours and a lot of good time for our commission, so I'd like to say that thank you out on the front end here. So the next step is, who's gonna fill her shoes? It's, the role really is meeting prep. Do you want me to go over sort of what the responsibilities are?
I have a question. Yeah, a question, just a clarification here. Agenda, we have elected Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk. You mentioned co-chair, is there some clarification there, please?
Yep, so what went on in the past, and I was actually gonna discuss that with you in a moment. The originally, the setup was just that model, and we really need to discuss that. The alignment of your board, first and foremost. The original rules document, for lack of better terms, that we followed, which was the Policies and Procedures for the Bristol Vermont Planning Commission adopted in 2014. The it talks about the, having a, of course, the Chair, the Vice Chair, and a Clerk. As things have changed over the years, the board, the last year, in the last few years, made a change to that to that structure, and opted that the co-chair actually made more sense. It allowed people to share the responsibility instead of being a classic Vice Chair. Where all of a sudden the Chair puts the call in at six o'clock that night, they can't make it, and the Vice Chair sort of flounders through the agenda and hopes for the best. The co-chair methodology was, the two would share the roles, work together, and be able to be, create one harmonious leadership team. The other half would be the need for a clerk. I'm not really certain that that is a necessity anymore now that the town has brought Peggy on board. I do a lot of the backend as well, as far as getting your meeting materials together, and that's part of my role as zoning administrator. So I was sort of hoping that somebody might make a motion here to possibly either modify that structure or come up with a, some official verbiage for a new structure if you would like.
Hey, Chris?
Yeah.
Just for clarity, that Policies and Procedures document does say that it's a Vice Chair person and Clerk, one entity, one person filling the two roles, not three separate roles.
Oh, that's right. That was another change that they had made a while back. So, again, I think you could strike the necessity of a clerk and just elect two co-chairs this evening, and that would create a viable structure for you all.
Thanks for clarity. I would make the motion that we make it Chair and Vice Chair, eliminate the Clerk position.
Second. Is there any discussion on, so the motion, Tom, was to set it up with the Chair and Vice Chair, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, any discussion on that?
I think the co-chair idea might be a bit a bit better, so, the way you were describing it, anyway.
Me adding to that discussion, I think clarity in the position is important, so if we've got one leader rather than two, it'd be preferable, in my opinion.
Well, if they shared, if they share the duties as it would be for what you say Chair and co-chair, I would think, but we can call them whatever, you know, you want, so that when there's a meeting, whatever, there's one person running the meeting.
Right, these are current verbiage. The, it says, "In order that the efforts of the Chair and the Vice Chair will be coordinated, and both are prepared to lead the meetings, they will meet or talk by phone at least once between meetings before a finalization of the next meeting agenda." So it's really asking them to work together ahead of time, and I think that verbiage actually works well. Any other input? Seeing none. Let's, all those in favor of the motion to keep the Chair and Vice Chair and eliminate the Clerk position, please signify by raising your hand. John, all those opposed, please raise their hand.
All right, it was, uh.
You're on mute, John.
Yo, let's try that. No, I was, I was more in favor of having, you know, kind of a team approach to it as well. But it's, you know, I'll go, I'll go with the majority. It's not, it's not an issue, as far as I'm concerned.
The motion carries, so that's the first, now that you've defined your structure. The next piece would be figuring out who's gonna be the Chair. Tom?
I propose a slate.
Okay. No. I wasn't prepared for that, that's okay.
Okay. Make a motion that we elect Kevin Hanson as Chair and Jeff Lundstedt as Vice Chair.
Everyone heard that? That was Kevin Hanson as Chair, Jeff Lundstedt for Vice Chair. And do I have a second?
We do.
Mr. Sayer, second sat. Are there any other nominations on the floor? Any other nominations? Any other nomination? All right. Any discussion?
Wasn't there a presidential candidate who said, "If nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve," but I'm not gonna say that.
Unfortunately, you were on mute, and we didn't hear that, so we didn't hear anything.
That's not the candidate you want to be, Jeff.
No.
He was not a popular one.
I think it was William Henry Harrison or somebody like that.
He's the one who gave the longest inaugural speech and then died thirty days later.
Okay, so, any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor for Kevin Hanson as Chair and Jeff Lundstedt as Vice Chair, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Congratulations, Kevin and Jeff. With that, I'm gonna hand this meeting over to your new Chair, Kevin Hanson.
Thank you, I think. So with the election of officers taken care of, the next item on the agenda is to review the agenda for additions and removal, adjustment, et cetera. There are a couple of things I would, I would like to add or include or change on the agenda, if it's gonna be okay, is underneath Administrative Matters, I would like to add an item update for Bristol Solar and Bristol R E S S. And then underneath Item Four for Continuing Business, we have an action to approve the town plan, and that action, or that motion, could spawn a fair amount of discussion, I realize that, but I think it may be advantageous to start an informal discussion before we take that action, so I'd like to, when we get to that part, I'd like to have a discussion, if you will, as opposed to moving right into the action. I'm not sure if anybody else has any other clarifications, changes they would like to have entertained. Okay. So we'll move on to Item Three, Administrative Matters. Item A, which is Approval of Last Meeting's Minutes, there is nobody that owns up to having taken them, so I believe we have no documentation of that particular meeting, so there's no, I do not believe there's any action there unless somebody has a different point of view than that. So then, the next item B is the discussion of the zoning administrator's report. Chris did send out a log earlier this week, or a couple of days ago, of his activity or permits that are active, so at this point, I guess if, Chris, if you have anything additional to say, or if any of the members have any questions, we'll take, you can take them.
I don't have anything to add necessarily. It's been, it's been a crazy couple of months, and it's only gonna get busier. Building is taking off like wildfire right now, even the building costs skyrocketing, and there's some large projects that the Development Review Board is working on currently.
Does anybody have any specific questions for Chris?
I just had a question. Question, Chris, is there anything unusual in this report that we should be paying attention to?
No, probably the biggest item on there at the moment is the Stony Hill Properties entry near the end for the subdivision and conditional use. That project is moving forward very rapidly. The, for those of you who aren't aware, that is a business park that's been proposed for about twenty-five, thirty years behind the existing fire station. It's finally coming to light. They've got, they had their first hearing for the subdivision, and next week they have their conditional use hearing and preliminary plat hearing. It's gonna consist of three buildings, ranging fifteen to twenty thousand square feet of building. They have a tenant already for one of them. It's very exciting news. So this has gone from pipe dream to reality slowly, but it's literally gonna happen. So, very exciting.
What tenant did they have?
I don't know if they're ready to disclose that yet. It's a local business, it's a area business. It's not a Bristol business necessarily, but it's gonna become a Bristol business. The people are, the owner is very excited to relocate his business to our area, and it's something new for our area.
The second item from the end, Parker Allison Living Trust, addition of six twenty-four by twenty-four garages. What are we talking about there?
So that would be the Robert Fuller P U D that was done in 2016 over on North Street, where the, where the homes are being built. The D R B, at this point, at their last meeting, denied that application for those, for the site plan modification for the addition of six additional buildings on that site. So, in speaking with Mr. Fuller, I believe that he is not going to pursue that any further. If the individual homeowners want to pursue it, they will be, they will go in front of the Development Review Board to ask for a site plan modification.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris.
Anytime.
The next item for discussion is the town plan review by the Regional Planning Commission. I guess my question is, who knows what?
I have a tiny bit of insight for you, and it's very tiny. There was an email communication between Valerie and Andrew Leroux from Addison County Planning, and it sounds like we just need, that Bristol needs to author a, send them a copy and request a review from Addison County Regional Planning. If that is the case, I was hoping that you all would either authorize me to go ahead and do that, or authorize me to have Valerie go ahead and do that. I'm fine either direction, or if one of you want to do it, I'm good with that, too.
Kevin, it's Bill. Either Chris or Valerie could send it. And what it means is, we, there's a provision in the original Act eighty-eight, I believe it was, passed back in nineteen eighty-nine, as a compromise that town plans must be reviewed by the Regional Planning Commission to assure that they're consistent with the regional plan, which they almost always are, because the regional plan intends to grant a fair amount of latitude to individual towns, rightly so in my view. But the other, other check is with neighboring towns, to make sure there's no inconsistencies or bad surprises there, so there will be a review by Regional Planning and then a hearing. And after that, there will be a recommendation to the Regional Planning Commission and a vote. That's, that's what will happen.
So, do I understand it's not just a review, it's an approval? They have to approve the plan? Is that what you're saying? Is that what they're doing when they vote?
In effect, in effect. As you could imagine, there was quite a lot of spirited discussion at the time, thirty years ago, when that was passed. But I will say the 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 concerns that some people had about a top-down type of planning approval process have not been, not been warranted. It's a cooperative spirit, a spirit of mutual understanding and cooperation. It's almost always worked out pretty well. Matter of fact, I couldn't think, Jeff, of a time where it hasn't.
Yeah, well, I would assume since the Regional Planning Commission was intimately involved in the generation of the plan, that it would be sort of contradictory for them to turn around and say, no, we don't like it, so do we need to have a motion?
The staff was, was the one that worked with us, Jeff, and you know how that can be sometimes. Every so often, staff and legislative bodies disagree.
Right.
So I guess the other wrinkle, or the other thing I heard is we need to communicate to other, the joining towns, so I'm not clear if that has been instituted either.
I don't know whether the Regional Planning Commission will take care of that, or whether that's Chris.
So, before the Bristol vote, a copy of that plan was sent out to the surrounding towns. I did that.
And that would constitute review for them?
I believe it does. When I send it to Adam, Addison County Regional, I will confirm. And if a copy needs to be sent out, an additional copy needs to be sent out from the town, that'll be part of my duties as well.
Of course, of course, the other, the other wrinkle we have this time around with the town plan is they will also be reviewing an energy plan, which has a few more hooks in it than just a regular town plan, so I guess at this point, is there anybody else having any clarifying questions? So maybe we should entertain a motion of how we're gonna dispose of it or move it forward?
Well, I'll move it. Chris, if somebody else wants to make the motion, that's fine with me. But if not, I'll move that that Chris send the unnecessary documents, which I think is just a copy of the plan, onto the Regional Planning Commission for review and and scheduling our in due course, scheduling our meeting with their delegation.
Second.
Any more discussion? I was at a, I had a space moment there. I was just waiting for people to start talking. Is there any more discussion? Okay, let's bring it to a vote, and everybody, all in favor of having Chris take the plan forward with regional planning as required, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So it passes unanimously. Thank you, Chris. No problem. So the other thing I wanted to insert was, it's mostly informational, but the we have had presentations about a solar, solar field on what I call the Laithrop Plateau, or the property on the other side of South Street. They have gone ahead and actually, there's two, there'll be two filings, but they've gone ahead with the Public Utility Commission, the P U C, and have filed for each one of those projects, and if, just as a reminder, the solar field is a 2.2 megawatt solar generation facility, and the P U C case for that is twenty-one dash zero nine seven four dash P E T, as in PAT. And then the battery storage facility, which is a 2.95 megawatt battery storage facility, the P U C case for that is twenty-one zero nine seven five dash P E T. And you can follow those on the electronic stuff from the P U C. They can send you out emails, or you can go see the case and activity, if you will. The town, I'm not sure what the select board is doing in detail, but the town does have interest there due to, it's adjacent to a wellhead protection area for the village water system. The initial hearing was last night, and the schedule they've laid out for that, pending no major challenges, is they anticipate issuing permits mid-July for it. So it's, my intent was information there. I don't know if anybody has any questions or not, or should we just move on? All set?
We can move on.
So. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, do you have a question?
No, I'm agreeing. Let's move on.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is Item Four, no, I'm sorry, I'm on Item Five. No, I'm on Item Four now. And then it has to do with implementing the town plan, the implementation part of the town plan. I had a previous meeting volunteer to come up with a draft of some documentation to outline the implementation plan a little bit more concisely into a working document. I did talk with Katie a little bit before she decided not to extend her term and massage it a little bit based on how we had talked about that into hopefully some working documents with a master document. The, in the framework, is pretty much that. It's all Excel spreadsheets. It's all linked in a file that Chris made for master documents for tonight's meeting. There's a master document, and then there's a series of individual files for each group that has tasks assigned to them, whether it's primary, secondary, tertiary. And the thought was, they would be given those files as working documents, and as they, there's fields for updating and that sort of thing, prioritization, and as they work those issues, if they make comments and stuff, those files could be recollected, and that information fed into a master sheet, if you will. So I wanted to kind of back up a little bit, have an overview of that, kind of a discussion. If it makes sense, doesn't make sense, if we should modify the thing before we do a formal motion, so floor is anybody that has an issue or a question?
I guess my question is, oh, go ahead.
A very general question. Where am I finding, where am I finding copies of the working documents at this point?
I will email those to you right now, John. I sent them out before they approved your seating, and I oversaw.
No worries, no worries. That way I can jump right on that and review that and have some idea of what we're talking about.
I have a question. You were talking about prioritizing. How is that gonna be indicated on the documents?
So the documents.
Because I looked, and I didn't really see anything for that.
Yeah, I think what happens, what happens is I put a, everybody has a third tab with the original document, and you can see, you can go in, for instance, the select board could go in and see see where in the scheme for that particular item, whether, what responsibility they have. I was just being lazy because I didn't want to go through all these documents and list them out individually, because I couldn't figure out how else to do it, so you kind of, it's kind of a little You kind of it's kind of a little bit backwards in the sense that you'd have to go back to that third tab. And see where where you lie within that action item.
But I mean, you know, when we when we start putting things in there, how do we? How can we show they're prioritized within like just the planning commission? Can we do color, some kind of color? Line coding of some kind?
You could do, there is a, there is a column for prioritization. So you could, you know, my thought was you just go one to whatever. Um.
Maybe I didn't see that.
Yeah, I think there's a, there is a column for that or, you know, there are some quite a few of the fields are locked, so you don't lose. The translation capability to the master one, but any of those other fields you could color or whatever you want.
Yeah, I see a schedule, but I column.
Um.
Which is column G. But I meant as far as a working document, like. What's being worked on? Currently. You know what I'm saying? I don't know if you know what I mean, like, like, we're going to work on this now. We're going to work on this in a month or two months or however.
Okay.
That is, I see where it says your schedule, like three years, five years ongoing.
Yeah, so if column G. Is a priority column. So I was, my thought was there is you just number these things. And then you could sort based on those numbers, one, two, three, whatever.
Yeah, it'd have to be just, yeah, take years. Well, I don't know how you can do that.
Um, and then you you know intuitively you may, I mean, some of this stuff is ongoing, some of it's one year, some of it's five years, you know, but.
I see.
Depending on, you know, the the whatever the body is. You know, maybe the one year things that we want, it says high priority or low priority or.
Yeah, that's.
Whatever, you know.
Because I mean, when it says three years, three years from when? You know, three years from now and then in a year, does that change to two years? I mean, you know.
Oh, it's I would say it, I would assume it's static from the issue of the plan.
Okay.
So the plan is a five-year document, I think. And so.
Is it an eight now?
Yes, it might be. So if it's an eight-year document, you know, the first three years you should be working on X or the first five years or some of that stuff is you just keep working on it, you know?
Okay.
Kevin, so if I count correctly, there are fourteen action items for the planning commission. So is our. Is our goal to. As Melissa said, prioritize them and then decide how to work on a particular one or. What what are we trying to do is my question? How how do we go about? Dealing with this?
So there's there's. I'm sorry. So there's there's multiple facets here. One is to understand. Um, I think, or the intent is when I when I came up with this concept, one was. How do we communicate it out to other responsible parties? Um, and then have a document that we can somehow manage what's going on. And then the the third, the other thing would be, what are we going to do ourselves amongst us kids? And, uh, you know, we, I'm. I would imagine we we will have a discussion over a meeting or maybe a few meetings that would. Um, everybody would be contemplating priorities and we as a board would be distilling that into. Our direction over the next. Well, probably several several years. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because we can't work on fourteen items at once.
Yeah.
That's clear.
And there was.
Thinking of is is you have these, you have so many that are three years, so many that are five years, but what do we want to work on now? What's the next one? And then. Somehow maybe color those, just color the line so we know, assign colors and we know what's, people will know what's. Currently being worked on, like. The immediate. One.
Yep, I I think, yeah, I think I get what you what you're saying, Melissa, that, you know, kind of use like a red, a red, yellow, green. Uh, kind of. Red being, red being those items that that are the hottest, the hottest, most important issues that we decided that we need to work on attack first. Yellow and then, you know, green and then on down the line and move, you know, obviously things would move up. As as time goes on and and as we complete other tasks.
Right, right. And really just the 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 tab that, uh. Sorry, the column that says what who's responsible. So under planning commission, I mean, that could be where we put the color. So if you don't want to put it all across the whole thing. To make it, you know, kind of difficult to read, we could do that or we could put a tab and before A that's just for color coding.
Another as another part in that document that's more, it's kind of a status thing, it's rather simplistic. Is all the way to the left, there's a um, I call a meatball chart, but it's basically a you. It clicks in every quarter of completion, if you will. Um, and then. If you, there's a spot, there's a spot where you can put numerically what the percentage completion is. In column A. And then column B, when when that number gets above twenty five, fifty, seventy five percent, it'll automatically color that little circle in. So you can graphically see. Um, where progress is being made that way as well.
What what is on that on that one, implementation plan actions? What is that gray thing in the middle? I don't. Is that, are those the columns? It it looks like it the. I guess that's, I guess that's just, is that part of the spreadsheet?
Yeah, so the on the on the spreadsheets that go out. Um, the grade information is locked and non-editable.
Okay, okay.
So that, um, when we pull that information back, it'll it'll still have the right formatting to go into the master sheet.
Oh, okay. Right, it just it confused me a little because there were no lines. Every other section has. You know, the the, I don't even know what.
I mean, we can get lines in there, it's just.
Yeah, just it was all confusing because for me, when I just looked at it at a glance, so.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of, when I shaded those boxes, you lost the background grids.
Right, right. And I did have one other question though, and it's on the, let me look at it while I'm doing it. Uh, the um. When it's, uh, when, oh my gosh, I know the primary for a. Group that's responsible, primary responsible, secondary. Now, is that something that for secondary is is at the request of the primary? Otherwise, we don't particularly do anything or how does that? Work?
So if you go back to the original plan. It lists multiple groups and and many on many tasks. And I took to develop this sheet, I took whoever was listed first is primary. The next person, secondary, and the third party that in that description is tertiary and there was nothing that was ever assigned more than three people. So. I think there's a lot of gray area there when you get right down to it. Um, and it's it's and I don't know. Quite honestly, through the process, how much of this was communicated out to some of these different boards? I know there was some discussion with some of them, but. Um, you know, um, so there may be. Some bantering back and forth as to if the order of who's heading, quote unquote, heading because they're primary. If that's fair or not. So I mean, this is a work, this is the intent is to have it as a working document, you know?
Right, right. I mean, is that something that that? All the, I mean, is there a time when the select board and all the commissions are gathered together to have a meeting? Sorry, I just don't. I'm not familiar with.
I'm.
You know what I'm saying? How how do we get together and say, okay, this is, you're the primary? So what does what does the secondary do and what does the tertiary do? I mean, is? Has that been discussed?
I'm not aware, and and other board members should jump in, but I'm not aware of any sort of. Um, big meeting where boards come across there. I do know that the select board has. Each member of the select board has, um, I don't know if you want to call it responsibility, but there is sign. Various boards, so all the subboards are reviewed or there's a contact point if there will. Um, and I think, you know. There's a lot of philosophical discussion here that, um. Probably should happen as we walk down this path. And I I think as we, you know, as we. Start thinking about this too, there needs, I think there should be some discussion about, um. How we handle this compared and and maybe even look over the shoulder to some other boards in the area and see how they're. Implementing things because I think in a lot of ways, this is new area. To attempt to address. Um, and I I don't want to be, I don't want to. Say things, and I'm not sure I should say this, but I don't think implementation plans were necessarily actively worked on. Um, in any organization, in an organized manner in the past. I don't feel.
I mean, the the last, you know, I just know that the last several years, there's been issues with. You know, boards not talking to each other or commissions or whatever, not talking to each other. Um, and the information getting from a board to the select board or vice versa. And so that's what I'm I'm saying. I mean, is it something where the select board? Maybe would make the decisions as to if you're the primary, this is what you do. If you're the secondary, this is your responsibility. Um, or should we have a meeting of everyone in all the commissions, all the boards and the select board? Of course, we probably couldn't do that on Zoom because it would just be too many.
Yeah, potentially. I mean, I mean, um, and that's what I was alluding to before that. There's probably. This is probably fodder for, um. You know, way past this meeting. This is kind of a get our feet wet type thing, but there's, there's a lot of interesting points you're raising, Melissa, and how we do that. Um, you know, and how we communicate out. On our own as opposed to trying to draw other people in is all in a state of flux with a. New charter for the planning commission as well as new officers. Jeff?
So I, maybe someone who's been around longer can tell us how implementation has been implemented in the past, uh. If at all.
It hasn't.
Hasn't, okay, that's what I thought.
I mean, I'm just thinking, it just seems like if we really want to, I mean, this this whole, the spreadsheet, this, I mean, this is a great idea. The shared documents will, I think, help everyone. And it's all about communication. So I think at some point, everybody that's on any board. We all need to be together and discuss and decide how we're going to do things, how we're going to, who's going to prioritize what and and implementation. And make sure that things are keep moving forward. I mean, just just to have a real base group of what everybody thinks, everybody has input. And maybe in the end, if there's any controversy or any decision made, the select board will would decide.
Jeff, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, but I'll let Tom go first because I've been talking.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, listening to Melissa's proposal there, I think it's a smart idea and yeah, too many people to get together at one time, but. Can we liaise with the other boards with, say, a representative from our board? And each board have somebody that kind of coordinates the the effort.
And maybe just all the chairmans need to have a meeting.
There you go.
You know? Just to just to kind of at least start. Getting communication going.
So I had two comments. One is that, um, and I I'm drawing partly from what Melissa was saying and Tom that. It would seem to me that if we're going to set priorities, there should be a discussion at the least with the select board. Because if we set off to do something that they're not interested in, then we waste our time. Uh. Uh, and the second is that, as I said, there's fourteen items there. And I know from experience and doing plans that if you have fourteen priorities, you have no priorities. So we would.
I think that isn't, is that fourteen but counting also secondary, us as a secondary?
That's just the primary, I think.
Was it? Okay, I thought I got twelve.
But anyway, my thought was that as part of this process, we should decide on. Two or at most three items. That we would want to work on now because otherwise you spread yourself too thin and and you're just not prioritizing.
Anybody else? Bill, have you got any thoughts?
Well. I think those. Every point that's been made so far has some. Validity to it. I I think that most of the. Implementation. Items are ones that. At some point in our discussions in the past two or three years, we thought were important enough to. To record on paper. And yes, I think if I think we should pick out two or three and as a commission. But we agree are at the top of the list and and work on them. Um, I also think it's a good idea for. Either the chairs of the various boards to stay in touch with each other or there be one particular person. Who's a liaison. Normally that would be the chair, but it doesn't have to be. I do, but my experience with very large meetings is that. About, uh. As much gets done as when you have fourteen priorities. So I don't recommend that. But. I suppose. Kevin, my requen recommendation would be for the chairs to confer with each other from time to time. So they can spot any possible. Difficulties or. Or either overreach or. Incompatibilities and we can resolve them, strive to resolve them. Number one and number two. Uh, that yes, pick out two or three priorities on which we can agree and then put those on our our list for. For this year.
Thank you. Um, let's go around a little bit and hear from some people that haven't talked. Lloyd, do you have any thoughts?
There may am.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think there's a couple ideas there. Um. One, keeping the items down to two or two or three at this point is probably more than enough, um. Um, having. Whether it's some. Chairman or. Or representative. Meeting with other. Other committees. It's probably, it's probably another good idea to kind of get the. That thread going through. Our way through the. Um, community. Structure. Yeah, there's another point I was thinking of, but I. Kind of lost that for the moment. Yeah, I think I think there's some good ideas coming out here.
Okay, thank you. Rob?
So I agree that we need to narrow focus to move forward, obviously. Um. As far as communicating, we need to obviously. Pass it along in some form. Good job, Kevin, with setting this up and formatting this the way you have to try to. Pass this along and coordinate with everyone and make it usable. Um. As far as. Coordinating with everyone else and working on priority gather to figure out what priorities are, that can get. Cumbersome and be very difficult. I think that. You know, I, I don't know if we were talking about just focusing on the planning commission's tasks when we were talking about prioritizing or all of the information. Implementation tasks across the board. Um, I think that. We should try to narrow our focus and decide what we're going to tackle and how we're going to tackle it and move forward with clear objectives. Otherwise. We might as well just set this aside and move on to something else.
So I'm, I'm not, you talked about, um. The, the planning commission having objectives, but then objectives across the whole implementation plan. So. I, I didn't come away clear if you were promoting. To each group to have their objectives clearly or across the implementation plan.
Well, I was referring to those that are assigned to, say, the select board or conservation commission, those sorts of. Tasks, um, that is what I was referring to there. Just that, you know, it's easy to get lost in the weeds because there's so much there.
Thank you. Um, John, do you have any thoughts?
I, I, I guess I, yeah, just to, to, to clarify a bit, I, I. I, I agree with, with, with everything we've, we've put out so far, um. And, and I guess I'm, I'm kind of piggybacking on Rob is, is do we take? Are we going to take our list of priorities, the planning commission list and attack that first? Um, I, I guess from, from a, uh. If I'm just, if I'm just going right, right back to grassroots, we are the planning commission. So it would make sense to me to. To work from, you know, work from our own list, uh, first. And, and of course, you know, decide what, what we as a commission want to do off of our list and, and attack those items first. But being flexible enough and being, uh, uh. Uh, adaptable enough to be able to. Move and, and shake and if, if another, if another commission or another board. Pops up and wants to enlist us to do something else or wants us to move in a different direction, um, I think. So we kind of have a, I see it as kind of a twofold. Twofold process for us here is to, is to press ahead with our own, with our own agenda, with our own list. And yet be available and, uh, uh, be adaptable enough to, to. Dive in and help out or dive in and change tack if we have to for, uh, to, to assist in another, another task that isn't. On our specific list.
So I'm, I, I guess. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I, I took kind of a thirty thousand foot overview of, of it, uh. And I'm just, you know, and I'm, and I'm reading this document off of my phone too. So it's, uh, it's, uh. Yeah, my, yeah, my eyes are crossed at this point, but.
So I guess one of the things I'm starting to understand with you and Rob is. While the planning commission may have a clear set of. Priorities that they distill. If another group ends up. Creating the same two, three priorities. From their list. There could be some interactive responsibility or distractions, if you will. So I guess at that point you'd have to negotiate perhaps as to. If that's a priority, um. Important enough for one group that they take lead on it or maybe something. I don't know.
That's what I, that's what I, I'm sorry.
Is that a concern I heard from the, from both you, Rob and John about?
My, my concern is that it wasn't clear when we're talking about liaising with all the other missions and groups, uh, it wasn't clear. Whether our focus was going to be on the planning commission's task, the implementation. Table solely and not getting lost in every, all the tasks that are assigned to all of the other. Entities. And that's, that's where I was looking for some clarity on.
Well, in my mind, it was, it was our responsibilities that I was talking about. You know, prioritizing, but. Uh, uh, one thing that, that's the thing that John was talking about. That's why I want to know what this primary mean, what the secondary mean, what this tertiary mean. Does that mean? We do stuff on our own or does that mean we don't do anything unless the primary request that our commission or whatever, whoever is secondary? Help them with something. That's, that's, I think when you, if, if all the representatives from all the commissions or boards get together. To decide on that and, and how that's going to work because we don't need to be working on something. Unless they need us to, then we shouldn't even be. Shouldn't be on our radar at this point.
So if I understand what you're saying, if we need to re pri- we need to reassess. How these things have been arbitrarily assigned as far as priority.
Well, as far as who, who it's going to, the primary, secondary, tertiary.
Yeah, that's, yep. Okay.
Yeah.
Fair point.
Or maybe assessed. I don't know.
Um. So Tom or Jeff, you've inputted a little bit. Do you have any more?
Well, I, I. I mean, I was thinking mainly of looking at what we're set up to do, you know, our.
Yeah.
Uh, tasks, because after all, they're our tasks and. We don't have any authority over other commissions to say, as far as I can see, nor should we. To say, hey, you're not doing your task, um. They might want to discuss with them. What they're doing, um, but I would think that. Our main thing would be to say, okay, of these fourteen tasks, what, what, what should we and can we work on? Uh, starting now, I mean, starting now, now, obviously not right now, um, and then. He, uh, and then I, I'm not sure whether. We would first look at it and then go to the select board and say, here's our thoughts. This is what we'd like to work on. What do you think of this? Or if we wanted to show. The tasks to the select board first and say, what do you think is important? I, I'd rather not do that. I think that invites.
Yeah.
Uh, more trouble than it's worth, um, but that's what I would. Propose that, that at least we think about doing is. We can all look at this list and, and say, okay, what is, what, what would we want to do and how would we do it? And then see if we can agree. On that and then, then we could move forward from there, um, in a. In a way which we hope would be efficient and would maybe produce some results.
Um. Agreeable with everything so far. I'm actually encouraged that we're actually going to take some. Affirmative action on these items that apparently have been overlooked or not even addressed in the past. And I think we should as a, maybe a subject for the next meeting or whatever is to narrow down. To two or three or four of these primary things that we can focus on rather than a scattershot sort of deal. So I think the.
Yeah.
Short. Like to this is like, let's, uh, let's focus and.
Yep.
And get some things and take action.
Thank you. Um. So a lot of good discussion, um. What I'm hearing. Couple, few things I'm hearing is, um, well, let me, let me ask the group. If we're ready to, uh, say this is the format that we want to work with, or do we want to? Um, take and take the time to now and next meeting and scrub it a little bit, which, you know, which would effectively, we, I'm getting back to. Our process here, which would effectively mean that we would table the action. Um, I think, I think we want to get that straight. I think we're all, the other thing I'm hearing is we want to set up some multi-board or multi-function. Task force, if you will, that would be, um. Assigned people or leads that would start. Talking cross-boards and getting some sort of, uh. Um, cross-pollination, if you will, um. And then to develop the details for a few priorities at a time. Rob, did you add your hand up?
Yeah, I was wondering, so the fourteen items that were sent out, uh, set out as planning commission. Implementation actions. Those were where planning commission was primary, correct?
Right.
So.
I, well.
Is it necessary to set up, uh? Liaison task force if that's the case, or i- if we don't. If we don't decide to work on anything immediately where there is anybody else assigned to that, if we say we're going to. Tackle these three things and we are the only entity that's involved with it, then. It's kind of a moot point.
Uh, first, uh, hold, if I could just say something, Melissa, first, I would not assume that they're all. Our priority alone, um. Personally, I would want to go back to the list and, and distill it and make sure that's true because I can't, I simply don't remember. Uh, but any, anyway, Melissa.
Okay, my idea of getting people together was just an initial thing so that you go over the spreadsheet. How it works, if everyone agrees on it, so that everybody uses it and, and. That all the, all the commissions and boards use it and. To do exactly what you're saying, it is the, agree on, but it. This is planning commission, this is, um, you know, energy commission, this is whatever it is, that if you're together, you agree. Who, who is the prime, who's, who's responsibility each action is. And then we can, then we can go from there, we can prioritize, we can. Start working on things. And I think unless they're all, every, like all, like you said, all the representatives, whoever they are, get together and go through each one and say this, yes, this is. This belongs to the planning commission. Nobody else is going to work on this, or this belongs. To whichever one, that, that's, that was my idea of, of, of the meeting, not necessarily that they're going to meet every month and. They're, they're going to prioritize each other. It's just communication.
Right.
And clarification.
Okay, thanks. Um. So I. Let me see where I started summarizing here. So I'm thinking that we'd have. Some sort of, um. Cross-meeting, if you will, with a few key people. We said that. We would encourage everybody to take a sizable chunk. And then we'd be cautious about interdependencies. Is that anybody, is that some distill it pretty well, or am I missing something? Okay. So I think through that discussion, we've also, um. Kind of talked about, oh, so I guess the next thing to do would be. Uh, entertain a motion to table approving the implementation action items.
Second.
Second.
Okay, is there any? Hate to ask this, but is there any more discussion?
Can I say one thing, Kevin? I, I knew, I knew a chair of a board who had a very useful thing to say at a time like this. He would say, does anyone have anything to say that hasn't been said already?
Only new information. Okay, let's, um, let's formalize this with a, a vote and everybody in favor tabling it. Uh, yes, raise your hand. Anybody opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. And then I would also assert that. Discussion item B and C, we've already talked about as they were all intertwined, so. I think we, if anybody, unless anybody objects, we'll move on to item five, which is new.
Can I ask one question, Kevin, before we go? Because I, it is something new. Um, and it's a question for Chris, or maybe we have to ask the regional planning commission. I'm not sure. That some of these items to work on them require sort of technical expertise. Which we wouldn't have. And who would we call on for that and how would we do it?
It. It, it's really looking for finding a subject matter expert in that field. You do have money. Um, budgeted. For planning consultants. So. Um, one of the ones that was out there, there was a hot button from before was the, um. Mining piece where they'd already dealt with. Extraction, but mining was a, it was a question that needed to be answered and maybe finding. Um, somebody in that field to be able to come in and. Work with you to come up with a strategy for that. So. Um, as you come up with strategies, if you want me to research or if you all want to do research, uh, I'm more than willing to help out with that, so.
Okay, that's great. That's just good to know. That was an information item.
Okay, so let's, uh, move on to. Item five, new business, so, um. Technically, the month of May, which is our next meeting, is. Our reorganizational annual meeting, we've kind of. Preempted that a little bit by electing officers this month as opposed to next. But I would, I would ask that everybody. Take a look at the, um, bylaws. Um, we bantered around a little bit tonight at the beginning as to whether we want. How we want, what sort of an officer structure we want. Um, that, that kind of detail, it may seem like insignificant, but we should figure out. Um. How, how to make that, those bylaws. Reflect what we're actually doing. So if everybody could take a look at those. And be, excuse me.
Uh, just quick, when you say the bylaws, you mean the planning commission? Policies and procedure?
Yes.
Okay. Um. John, I'll send that to you right now.
And I think if you read, if you read it, um. The only, technically, the only opportunity to massage these things is at the annual meeting, so. Uh, not, no pressure, of course. But there, there are a few things in there that make me scratch my head and I. Would like to get input from others. I don't know if anybody has any comments or anything to. Say preemptively about, about considering those or not.
Well, I've taken a quick look at it. I think it could use some, a few changes. And, but we could discuss it next time, once everyone has a chance to go over it.
Yeah, bring proposals.
Kevin or, or Jeff, do either of you have? An example that you'd like us to be. Considering before we next meet?
Well, I wouldn't, I, I don't think I want to consider it now, since you ask, Bill, um, is that.
No, not, not considering that today, but you would like us to consider before our next meeting.
Okay, so one which strikes me is the, the, the somewhat awkward position that we were put in now. That the terms of people end in March. But the officers are elected in May. And, and we saw the, we saw the, the outcome, uh, the potential outcome, which in this case happened where. Since Katie's term ended, we had nothing, nobody to, well, Chris graciously stepped in. Uh, but it, it's a, it, it just, I would think we would simply make it. That the chair and the vice, uh, are elected in March.
That's a good example. Kevin, do you have one in mind?
I, I, uh, there's a few outdated. Comments in there that obviously is just housekeeping, but the other, the other one that bothers me a little bit in there. Is, um, where somebody's supposed to be keeping a record book of relevant communications and I. From my point of view, our minutes should be our relevant communications and we shouldn't be. Having some little book off to the side that might or may not get things. So there's a few things like that that just. Beg for, uh. Um, inconsistency, if you will, but I. Uh, there's, there's a lot of good things in there and the other, the other one is exactly what Jeff said is, is. Um, our organizational meeting is completely out of sync with any other board experience I've ever, um, seen, so. Okay. Thank you.
Would a possibility also be to, as, as Jeff had said, either. Either we elect the officers in March or have, have the terms extend to the May timeframe. What would be involved? With that, is there, is that, uh, something that can or can't be done or? Either way, it would sync it, it would sync it everything up with the, for an annual meeting.
So and, and now you're in the bailiwick, the bailiwick of the select board. And, uh, you know, so. I'm not sure if we be in the tail want to wag the dog, you know? But, I mean. Maybe we do.
I, 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 I know, I know a guy.
Which part of the dog are you calling me, Kevin?
That's an old saying. I don't know if it's a Vermont one or not, but it's an old saying.
There was a movie back in the nineties.
There was a movie back in the 90s that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think we can make a recommendation as we, and that may be a policy we'll want to follow with all of these issues for boards that are not us. We, we have a recommendation, but obviously, we don't make decisions for other people. Other, at least not other boards, yeah.
Okay, so there's some food for thought. The other item is well, when I wrote this agenda, we had two openings. I think we're down to one. And so it's obviously it'd be a great thing to have that one filled as well. And and I would encourage, and and sometimes it takes shoulder tapping as opposed to just a general request. I would urge people to look at the board and look at who we are. You know, not, and look at a few of the I don't know if I want to get into profiling, but like the age, our age group.
Gender.
Gender, that's a great one right there. You know, village dwellers versus townies and, you know, some of that kind of stuff, you know? But, you know, give us some careful thought and, you know, tap on a few shoulders.
Yeah. Good idea.
So, Will, we got through that one. So I guess at this point, we're on to public comment. I don't know if we have, do we have anybody interested in giving public comment?
I think we need to hear from Jim.
No? Yes?
Peanut gallery.
I have nothing to say. You do a fine job. The only advice I can give you guys is don't make things too complicated. Don't worry about the planning commission, do your thing, that's it. I did over 25 years of SoCal Town with absolutely no recognition, so good luck, guys.
It doesn't have anything to do with the planning commission, but as also with the public, man, they did a great job cleaning the sidewalks. Today, yesterday, today, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, they went on Main Street, they went to the buildings and cleaned everything. So it was, it was great.
Yeah. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll also move, but as we do so, Melissa, does that mean you're going to promise us we're not going to have another snowstorm?
I can't, who knows what the climate, the way it is, but hopefully not.
Tom?
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I think we got all sorts of people. So everybody in favor? Hi.
Right.
Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you.